Treasurer Collector. Mr. Uh, sorry, Whitney.
Sure, I can give a quick overview. Treasurer Collector is Department 145. They're coming in at an overall increase of 1.92%. The increase in salaries is completely driven by contractual obligations, which is employees moving through steps, et cetera. The increase in the expense line is driven by an increase in materials and supply costs, specifically paper forms, receipts, payroll checks, and direct deposit advices, as well as a melt increase due to anticipated increase in heating costs. And Gary is here to provide any more detail.
Anything else, Mr. Giannino?
Uh, nothing has really changed since my appearance, I think, last week.
Uh, any questions from the board? Ms. Priest.
Thanks, Chairman. Uh, Gary, I know, like, a month or two ago, you and Christine were here to talk about some of the restructuring happening down in the office. I'd love to hear about that and how it's going.
Restructuring is going quite well. The pension benefit team is continuing to work together incohesively as a group, which is positive. We're moving a lot of payments away from live checks to automatic clearinghouse. We're picking those up and monitoring our benefits more closely and dealing with our retirees on the treasury side. And we're looking to, just came to light, I've been talking about changes in some of our bills themselves so that they can be read easy with barcodes for our processing center. So we're moving ahead with that, moving ahead with our, hopefully with employee self-service, getting away from some of the papers, which is causing this budget to increase. So we're, uh, it's, we're moving slowly, but I think we're being effective in that manner.
Great, thank you.
Questions? That's a follow-up. I was gonna ask about paperless billing. Can we see that in the future?
It's difficult with the laws of the Commonwealth as far as what you can do with the internet or sending some things over. We do have options to pay online, which we're looking at expanding to eliminate that need for people to come in. We're, right now, our online, you can pay via ACH for a charge of 40 cents, which is less than a stamp and the time to move it in, move over to putting in the mailbox. In some cases, which we experienced right now, we had a problem with, we don't know where. We think it's the post office right around March 15th. And it caused some of the bills a delay in receipt, which turns around and people wanted to know why their checks weren't cashed. But we've collected some of those. We're still missing some. And we're asked, at this point, we're asking people to reissue the check. We're trying to use up old stock, which has caused a bit of a problem with this latest tax bill. Some people got the old P.O. box, which is embarrassing to me. But I think the vendor was trying to assist us with some old stock. But the more people we can have paying online, I think the better off we will be, especially with the processing center and getting that money cleared from their accounts quicker. People are under the impression if they go through, they pay through the bank, they'll see it come out of their account that day. But it takes four or five days before the bank releases that, those funds, to pay it. And that causes some disruption. And more, a lot of people, more people are using that automatic payment right through the bank. That causes a problem with sometimes with the bill number, which changes for motor vehicles, excise tax. And we're right in that mode now with motor vehicle excise, which is very labor-intensive. People sell their car, move their car, move out of town. We get all our information from the registry of motor vehicles, who have been going through their own issues, so.
Well, from my own personal perspective, I do the online, like, the online billing through the town's website. Forty cents is cheaper than a stamp, and it's cheaper than the gas it costs to get in.
Right.
And it's, it's so simple. It's such an easy way, just sit there and pay everything online. And I hope more people take advantage of that.
Something I looked at this morning, motor vehicle excise, once you get to that path, the past due when it goes to an outside company for deputy collector, you cannot pay online under our service. So we need to be a little clearer and give them instructions online where to make that payment. And I saw, I was looking at some other communities. Some say motor excise tax current, motor excise tax once under demand. So the more we can spell out, and we did have an insert in this last bill, the more we can spell out and explain different options, I think the better we'll be.
I think there might be implications with the registry of motor vehicles too, with failure to pay excise tax.
Right, yes.
Your excise tax. Okay, anything further? No, I'll be looking for a motion to approve Treasurer's Office.
So moved.
So move, uh, move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Okay, Town Administrator Select Board.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, let me ask Paul if it's okay. Should we take Select Board and Town Accountant in concert since the movement is relative to each other?
Okay, so the next two would be Town Administration, Select Board, and Accounting.
So we can maybe vote them separately, but discuss them as a single unit? So, starting with Town Administrator Select Board, you'll see that they're coming in at an overall increase of 9.65. And that salary increase is a combination of restructuring of FTE from support staff to a managerial position. The expense increase is largely due to a phased-in approach to right-size the Economic Development Department budget expenses. So when Melissa first started, we kind of just earmarked a chunk of money. And as she has really taken, taken the torch, we have determined a little bit more detail about what she's looking for. So that's a large driver of the expense budget. And as I'm sure we'll talk about further tonight in detail referring to the salary increase, you'll see a corresponding decrease in the Town Accountant position because, in Town Accountant Department, because basically we're looking to create the Assistant Town Administrator position, moving that individual to the Selectman's Budget, and then hiring a replacement Town Accountant, who would then come in at a lower rate. And I'm sure Paul and John have.
Zerino, you wanna follow up on?
No, just, Mr. Chairman, just a continuation of a three or four-year plan since we had the state do a little review of our financial offices and review some changes to the structure. You know, we certainly took our time in implementing those as the town could afford them over time. And this is really one of the final pieces of that reorganization, to hire a Town Accountant and to allow John to focus on the Finance Director, Assistant Town Administrator duties. We sort of offset the proposition with a unfilled position, clerical position. So was able to sort of blunt the financial impact of that and to keep the headcount FTE level. So zero increase in total headcount.
With rearized accounting, do you have anything to follow up on?
No, just more to the full picture here is if you net those two together, the adding of this position and the change in the structural support and management structure of the town nets out to $125,000 and is FTE-neutral, as Paul said. So I just wanted to make another, point that out.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, any questions on this, comments?
Oh, Jim, yeah.
Mr. Rainier.
Oh, good. Materials and supplies basically doubled last year.
Yeah, that's, so that's the piece I was talking about, the economic development. It's, um.
Oh, so it's the website?
It's put, yeah. So that was the line that was available to fund. So we actually have some additional detail on that that I can send you, where Melissa's broken that down into additional detail. But that, that's the driver of the increase. And yes, it has to do with the Bring Me to Burlington website initiative, social media, all-in-all communication with the business community.
Okay, I did have a chat with Melissa, a very brief chat, on the possibility of introducing some advertising to that Bring Me to Burlington site. So maybe we can, it's a further discussion on that.
That's definitely worth exploring.
Mr. Chairman, just to add one piece to that is that when Melissa first got here, we, we sort of tried to lay out what the budget needs might be over time. Then as she was able to get more data and get an idea of what other sources, she, funding sources she has to pay for things, we have a pretty good idea of what that budget is gonna be when we right-size it. And we'll probably have to do something similar next year, one more time. You know, we, we sort of committed to a multi-year phased-in approach to try to get her where she needs to be. I think that you all know that every dollar you spend on anything Melissa does has a high return on your investment. But I think we'll probably be doing something similar again next year if she doesn't run out of, you know, rabbits to pull out of hats to fund these things.
Agreed, agree with you 100%. It's been, it's been a very good investment for the community.
Okay, also, next?
I'm all set, Jim, thank you.
Who else, anybody else?
I'll just.
Mr. Priest.
Thank you. Just wanna comment briefly. I think that in terms of succession planning, that this is a very smart move, bringing this Assistant Town Administrator role online. You know, I'm very much looking forward to it, John. You know, I think that as we look out across the organization, you know, what other areas do we need to begin succession planning for? I know we heard from DPW tonight on how they're, you know, taking a look at things. But the more vertical the organization, not exorbitantly, but the more vertical that we can make it, and the better off that we're gonna be in terms of growth for employees and for a succession plan. So it's great to see that we're working toward that. Thank you both.
D'Amizio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Priest, you may remember that it was last spring where the board directed the administration to take a hard look at succession planning and support structure throughout the whole town, based on Mr. Sanchez sort of giving us a tip that he may not have long to go. So at our strategic planning last July, we reviewed that report and talked a little bit about this. And we also laid out Tier 1 and Tier 2, and then beyond things. So we will be coming back to you with the next set of, these are the things we talked about last year, which we'll be able to look into going forward. So things like HR, does that structure, how much longer can we survive on that structure a point you made tonight? So this isn't, isn't going away, but we'll continue to work hard at that.
I'll take Mr. D'Amizio. What?
All good.
All right, true, I agree. Succession planning is a must with the major departments. We've done it before. And we've been fortunate enough, when, when a department head moves on, to have someone, they usually, they typically give us enough time, enough notice to start searching for a replacement or the next person in. And if we didn't have a succession plan, and for some reason a department head had to leave abruptly or with short notice, that's when we're gonna find ourselves in a problem, with a problem. So I think it's necessary to have that fluidity, the consistency. And, God forbid, you know, an event that makes, that causes a department head to have to abruptly leave or leave in short notice, you know, we don't wanna see that happen. It's mighty sense-worth. All right, nothing further? I'll be looking for a motion to approve. Hold on, I can approve the Select Board, Town Administrator's Office first. Our budget first.
Let's free them separately.
We have to vote them separately.
Second.
All right, move the second for the Select Board, Town Administrator. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, 5-0-0. Now Accounting, I'll be looking for a motion for that.
Second.
Move the second to approve the Accounting budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, 5-0-0. Okay. Uh, next item, next budget is Central Administration.
Okay, Central Administration is Department 149, and it's actually made up of a number of different pieces. So there's an operating side, which is made up of central supply and central machine, and then a number of the accommodated accounts that we'll also be talking about tonight. So I'll start quickly with central supply and central machine lines. Central supply is basically the funds we budget for various general government supplies. The office handles, Paul's office handles the bill mailings, postage, and general office supplies. General office supplies, we consider basically defined as those that may be used by any department, copy paper, notebooks, pens, pencils, et cetera, specialized supplies that are specific to a department are typically purchased through that department itself. This budget is level funded for FY '23. And then similarly, central machine is the budget line that funds all or most of the general government copiers and postage machines, which are also handled through the Select Board's Office. The costs are reviewed on an annual basis. When replacements are made, when machines are no longer serviceable, we look at procuring a new machine and the cost impact of leasing versus purchasing. As part of that initiative, we had a number of units this year that have come up, that were owned and have come up to a point where they are no longer serviceable and parts are no longer available. So as we replace those machines, we're looking at a slight uptick to get them on a lease agreement. But the idea is that over time, that should level back out. So that's why you see, I think it's maybe $1,000, a very minor increase. That's part of that plan of taking those machines off that we can no longer service or get parts for and put them on leases for the longer term. I don't know if there are any specific questions about that.
Whitney, any questions on that? Mr. Priest.
Thank you. This is a, back, Gary, back to your point, but kinda going paperless. Would it make sense for the town to push for a paperless program? I mean, like, just like, really advocate for the residents to go paperless, you know? And if that means like a one-time investment in, you know, a sign-up or something through a program? I mean, $110,000 for mailings and postage and supplies is something I'd love to reduce. And the more we become digital as a society, it's be curious.
Mr. Giannino.
Oh.
Oh, I'll answer.
Oh, Mr. Zerino.
Uh, thank you, Nick. It's a great question, but unfortunately, the state sort of lags behind the rest of the world in terms of the laws related to providing notice.
Sure.
So if you talk to any of our departments, and you just heard from Gary, we're required to mail tax bills. So there's no option to not mail tax bills, or else it's not a valid bill. And I believe that if you spoke to most of our departments, any of their notification requirements to notify neighbors or official legal documents all require mailing or, you know, what do you call that, return receipt? So unfortunately, the state, the state's laws sort of haven't caught up with the modern times. And, you know, I will say that that's probably, you know, true through most of the country. And then a lot of this government business is still done formally through the mail.
Or a fax machine, we might be the only.
Right, a lot of the states that requires fax machines won't accept scans.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
I shouldn't say a lot, some. And the town, we are looking at the document management, the DocuSign, which would alleviate some of the exchange and copying of paper. So we are, I mean, we are looking at those sort of things.
All right, thank you, guys.
Yeah, where we can, we're definitely looking at, I mean, internally, a lot of departments are looking at trying to reduce the amount of paper and, you know, scanning rather than copying and printing and all that kind of stuff. But as they all said, there's a lot that we're sort of handcuffed with.
Sure.
So just to clarify, so we don't have the ability to opt out of physical mail in lieu of email? It has to be physically mailed?
Yes.
All right. Well, they probably have inline phones too. But anyway, moving on, is there a motion to approve this Central Administration?
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's moving the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, 5-0-0. Legal.
Uh, so can we actually go to the accommodateds under? Central Admin, I apologize, I should have listed them out in the agenda. So first we will cover Chapter 32B Benefits, which is essentially the health insurance line.
Which, Mrs. Whitney, I'm sorry, which budget?
Central Administration.
Within Central, aye.
Yeah, it's accommodated within Central Administration. 32B.
Oh, aye.
AKA health insurance.
Yep.
So this line funds health and other employee benefits. The administration and union representatives work closely with a consultant to monitor trends and health claims and review planned design changes in an effort to moderate cost increases. This program has been really successful over the past several years, and we continue to work diligently to contain costs. This year, the budget line will require a 4.02 increase.
All right, so we've already approved Central Admin. Does that mean we have to vote?
The Central Admin is made up of operating and accommodated. So central supply and machine are the operating piece, and then these other ones are accommodated, and they all roll up into total.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the Central Admin operating or accommodated?
You already did the operating.
All right, we're accommodated.
Love that.
All right, so any discussion on Central Admin accommodated expenses?
I would do them as a group and then.
If anybody has questions.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll cover all of these, and then we can hold them out. If not, or we can just vote them all together. Okay, so next one is transfer to OPEB. So this is, I believe, the seventh year that this transfer is included in the operating budget. The goal is to make this transfer a regular part of the operating budget, funded by the tax levy. As part of this plan, the town engages in, engages in actuary to prepare the OPEB valuation report, I believe, every two years. Gary can correct me if I'm wrong. And the amount that's requested today corresponds to the funding plan that was last updated in December 2020. Okay.
Can we discuss them all, or we'll just?
Yeah.
Go through the whole report first.
Yes.
Okay. Next one is unemployment compensation. So this is a budget line that funds all town and school unemployment claims. Mass General Law allows municipalities to fund actual unemployment claims as they are incurred. So this provides the town significant savings over the traditional funding method for unemployment claims through payroll taxes on each employee. Annually, this, the annual amount is unpredictable, but we've averaged over the last five years about $71,000, and over the past 10 years, $87,000 roughly. So we've been steady at $100,000 there for a few years, and it seems to cover what we need. Next one is town insurance. This budget funds all the town and school insurance, including property, casualty, auto, and professional liability. It also funds the town's self-insured workers' compensation program for all town and school employees. Everyone except for public safety, which are covered in their own budgets. The funding, as part of our annual renewal process, we engage the services of a consultant who helps us put together a bid process. As you might know, insurance is actually technically exempt from the procurement process, but this town has taken the position that it's, it should be bid, and we continue to do that. And we sort of look at the, we analyze the risk and reward of premiums versus deductibles, et cetera. This budget is presented at a 5% increase for this year. Next is financial audit. So this budget is largely used to fund the town's annual audit. We ended up increasing it in FY '19, reflecting the town's desire to engage in some additional targeted audits as needed or other accounting or financial renewed reviews or services. We knocked it down a touch in response to the reductions we made due to COVID, and we've sort of left it at that right now. So I believe it is coming in at $60,000, which is a 0% increase. And then the last one is Medicare. This budget funds the town share of Medicare tax for all town and school employees hired after March 31st, 1986. Employees hired prior to that date were not assessed a Medicare payroll tax. The increases in this budget are basically a result of overall wage increases and replacing employees hired prior to that date with employees who are now subject to that payroll tax. So we've requested a 5% increase this year on that line based on history and trends for this account. And that is it.
Thank you, Ed. So is anybody, so we're looking at unemployment compensation, Chapter 32B Health Insurance, Medicare, transfer to OPEB, Town Insurance, and Financial Services. Do I, does anybody wanna vote them individually? Or if not, I'll be looking for a motion to vote, approve as a group for Central Administration accommodated.
So before we, I mean, I'm fine with voting as a group. I do have a question about that.
Sure, Mr. Priest.
Without diving into an hour-long discussion about OPEB. Am I, am I reading this correctly that by 2047, OPEB will be fully funded, assuming nothing changes from today?
It's gonna change a thousand times between now and then.
Assuming.
But again, according to the plan that the actuaries developed, it's a 30-year plan.
Gary, what, what year are we on?
Seven.
Year seven, so as we move forward, this is gonna become a very big number. We're gonna have to make adjustments, we're gonna have to extend the plan. We're really pleased with the OPEB program. I think future generations of residents will be thankful that we at least developed the plan if we're not able to stick to the original 30-year plan. So we're very happy with the, what's going on with that. And we look forward to sometime in the future where we sort of get ahead of this thing. And again, none of us will be here, but I do think that future generations of Burlington residents will be thankful for this work that the town did at this time.
Yeah, and because it's now folded into the operating budget, do we foresee massive impacts to the taxes as the years go on?
Yeah, this number rises pretty rapidly. It goes up about nine, it's, the plan calls for it to go up over 9% a year. So that's a, that starts to add up pretty quickly. And so, you know, within the next five, six years, we'll probably be looking at this number as a difficulty, difficult item in our budget. At that time, we'll talk to our actuaries about reworking the plan. And again, we're not required to fund this at this point, but we may be required in the future. So we have a lot of flexibility in how we fund this plan.
Okay, thank you.
It's not unlike the retirement plan that we kept moving the end date out as it was adjusted over the years. Is that not correct, Gary?
Correct.
Mr. Rainier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whitney, you said this was funded through the levy. Have we been paying this from our free cash account?
It was, it used, was a Warren article historically, up until this plan was initiated.
It's been in the budget for several years now. And occasionally, if there are excess free cash funds available, we'll throw a little extra and to sort of offset any things that could happen in the stock market or any other, the other healthcare cost factors that are out there.
All right, that being said, I'll be looking for a motion to approve Central Administration, Central Administration accommodated, total accommodated budget.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstain, 5-0-0. Okay. Whitney, you wanna do legal next?
Sure, okay. So the legal department budget is level funded for FY '23. This budget covers expenses for legal services for general government, collective bargaining, cable television, tax title, et cetera.
Comments on this?
Are we, are we contracted with town council? And is that on a yearly or multi-year?
Yeah, I'd have to check what the last contract was, but it's a board appointment, and it is a contract.
That's all, thank you.
Seeing nothing further, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the legal account.
So moved.
Move the second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 5-0-0. Next one is gonna be a little interesting, sealer of weights and measures.
Do you want me to start it, or?
Hey, just, you can just pull what we have in there, and then I can chime in.
Sealer of weights and measures is level funded for this year. So historically, the town has been contracting with the state to perform the sealer function. And the operating budget that you see in front of you is half the cost of that contract, with the other half coming from the sealer of weights and measures revolving fund. And then a town employee handles the invoicing and collection. So there's a nominal amount in there. But we were recently notified that the state is. But we were recently notified that the state is no longer going to offer that service for Burlington. So as we sort of pivot and try to determine the best way to move forward, we're requesting that we either vote the budget as is, and then there may need to be adjustments moving forward.
Mr. Zerino.
The only update I have, Mr. Chairman, is we reached out to the Massachusetts Sealer of Weights and Measures Association. They were kind enough to forward a solicitation from us, letting them know that we will be looking for a sealer at some point in time. So that's one of the options we're looking at, is to try to find a person that does sealing in other communities, is already licensed to do so, and see if they have the opportunity to do our work as well. The other option would be, I believe, that we could purchase equipment and hire our own part-time sealer. They would have a year to get certified by the state. Obviously, that would be option B in my book if we're unable to attract, you know, a sealer from another community. But we have received a couple phone calls on our solicitation, so we're hopeful that we will, excuse me, have something in place by July, July 1st.
Thank you. Any comments, Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, remind me again why the state was like, no, no Burlington, go away? Like, why?
Well, many years ago, we got the state actively recruited us into the program. I believe they had capacity, they had all the fancy equipment to do so, and they really aggressively pursued us to enter their program. Under the state law, they're not required to do any sealing for any community with a population of 20,000 or more. So new direction, new division head at that part of the state decided they didn't want to do this work anymore for the larger communities. Wasn't just Burlington, just in this area, Wilmington also was booted out and Wakefield as well. So I guess it's just a different philosophy at the state level. If you think of our community, we're a small town, but we have a lot of stuff to be sealed between the scales and all our, you know, supermarkets, and in particular scanners. They do price verification checks on scanners. And as you know, being a center of retail, we have a lot of retail scanners in town. So we're a little bit of an anomaly in terms of, you know, being a small town, a lot of activity.
Right. Is there any benefit to working with Wilmington and Wakefield to get a sealer for the three of us?
We've talked about it.
Okay.
Not sure if the logistics will work out, but we did discuss that, and we all received that faithful letter, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further on this one? Okay, we've been looking for motion to approve the Sealer of Weights and Measures budget as presented.
So moved.
Moving second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, 5-0-0. Okay, other accounts.
Okay, other is another funky one, kind of similar to central administration, where it's made up of a bunch of different accounts. Paul, did they vote on reserve fund? Or is that just...
They haven't. They can, they want to.
Okay, sure. Okay, so the first one is the Ways and Means Reserve Fund, which is essentially a line item that is used in the event that any emergency purchase is required, and it's not the appropriate time to go to town meeting, or the appropriate time is not available. So we typically budget it at the beginning of the fiscal year at $200,000, and then at January town meeting, we will bring that up to $300,000. So we'll put in $100,000 or more if an expenditure has been made between the beginning of the fiscal year and January town meeting.
Okay, just a quick question. We're going to need two votes on this one, too, operating and accommodated?
Uh, no, but I think I can do the same thing, where I cover each line, and then you can just vote the whole total at the end.
Sounds good to me.
Does that work, Paul?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, next one is county retirement, which is basically the assessment that we get from middlesex retirement. Not much to say about that. It's an assessment, and we put the number in there. We do get a slight savings for paying it by...
July 1st.
On July 1st. Other than that, that's it in a nutshell. Negotiated settlements, as I mentioned earlier tonight, we have, I believe, all of our contracts need to be settled for FY '23. So that's why you see a jump in that amount this year. That's covering all those funds, so that when those contracts become settled, the appropriate amounts are funneled into each budget accordingly. Next one is local transportation, which Marge mentioned a little bit tonight. That's basically, historically, was known as the B-line, line, but now it's essentially where we're putting the funding for the rideshare subsidy program. And then capital improvements is the last one. So that is year three of a five-year investment in technology infrastructure and cybersecurity improvements. And that's it.
Any questions on reserve fund, middlesex retirement, negotiated settlements, stabilization? Did you mention stabilization?
There's nothing.
Nothing else, right?
It's zero, yeah.
Uh, it's a zero. Local transportation for capital budget. If there's none, does anybody want to make a motion to approve those budgets, that budget as presented?
Second.
Second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, 5-0-0. Is that the end of the list?
Yes, it is. And I thank you all for your time, making the time for this special meeting. It's a lot easier.
We didn't vote debt service? We were going to vote debt service after the presentation, so maybe we could just go back and vote that.
Thank you, John.
Yeah. Great idea.
Whitney?
Debt service? We're going to talk about that.
So just following up on the occasion tonight, nuts and bolts, is the debt service budget, which is made up of the principal and interest, is coming in at a 12.19% increase for FY '23. Plus all the details that you argued tonight.
Yeah, just to add to what you heard me talk about tonight, that increase is bigger than we're used to. It's in that $800,000 range that we talked about. Part of that is that smoothing effect we talked about. We don't want to, we don't want to go from a $6.7 million budget one year to four years later having to be at $12 million all in one year. So this allows us to pay off some bands that we'll take out this year through the debt service budget issue. That's all included in that, 12.2%.
Any questions on that item? All right, seeing none, I'll be looking for motion to approve debt service.
So moved.
Move to second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, 5-0-0. Paul, I think doing this as a special meeting by itself, the budget is a lot easier to do as opposed to within a meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it'll make the following two April meetings a little bit easier in terms of what we have to deal with moving forward.
All right. In that case, I'll be looking for motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'm just going to make, Paul Hogan make his final motion.
Mr. Hogan.
My final motion should have been made an hour ago.
So moved.
Hogan. There are second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, 5-0-0.